Good evening. I'd like to start the town council budget meeting for January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first of all, we have two excused members this evening, Chair Finley Rothhouse and Counselor Mackenzie Murphy. And Nancy Murphy will be here momentarily. But in the meantime, Paul, you can go ahead. You said you had some announcements?
Yeah, I got a couple announcements for the council. Two of them relate to the budget. One relates to a public service announcement. The first one is, is that we had a question about, at last meeting, about the plan, the master plan, and how we funded that. We did fund that over a number of years again, last year. So that will be something that I'll be looking at next Wednesday to discuss with the council, the funded over a couple of years. The second thing is, is public service, is that if you're planning on doing a petition bond, you need to have them in the town manager's office, all signatures in the town manager's office by Friday, February ninth. And if you're planning on doing a petition warrant article, you need to have those into the town manager's office Tuesday, February thirteenth. I did receive one petition warrant article today from the MIA that has been sent over the supervisor checklist for their approval and the review of signatures to make sure everybody is a registered voter. And that's important to note, just because you get a signature doesn't mean it's a good signature. You have to ask people if they are registered or signed up and are registered to vote in the town of Merrimack. And that's the only acceptable signature.
That's why a lot of people say get a lot more signatures than you need.
Right. And then the last announcement is a public service announcement. As everybody knows, if they have watched TV in the last month, the primary is Tuesday, the twenty-third. I just want to say that we will not be running live election results that night with our media division. They will not be, will not be doing election results from the town for that. We encourage people, if they're interested in the election results, to go to the main CBS, NBC, ABC, CNN, all the main news outlets who will be carrying these election results for the state of New Hampshire. But the town of Merrimack will not be carrying live election results at our polling places. We will, however, if we wrap up that night.
When?
When? When? We wrap up that night? Yes, okay. We will be posting the next day on Facebook and on the, our websites of what the votes counts were in the town of Merrimack. Thank you.
Steve?
Paul, can I ask a question?
The, no.
Sure.
The warrant article, the petition warrant articles, you said the first one was if there's a money item?
Petition bond.
Petition bond?
Is February ninth. It's the Friday before.
Okay.
And then the, any petition warrant article, contract articles for union contracts are all need to be ratified by the thirteenth of February, the second Tuesday in February.
Okay, so there's not another date for warrant articles that have funding attached?
Nope. Nope. If you're not giving a petition bond, it's the thirteenth is the deadline date.
Okay. Thank you for everything else. Well, sir, and let it be known Nancy Murphy has arrived. Good evening. No problem. We've got the heads up. Yep. Okay, so we might as well get started. The first is solid waste, and that is tab zero nine.
I just want to let the people at home in the council know that, that solid waste department is, has two unions. So the wages, one union is in contract, that's our Aspen Union, they're in contract. So there are wage increases already included in the budget. The other union, which is a Teamster Union, which is the supervisors for DPW, will be, they're at the negotiating table now. So there's no raises calculated for that union in this budget. And like all the other departments, we've done finances, done health insurance, the wage calculations, general insurance, increase in the solid waste tipping fees. We've calculated all those costs, electricity, we calculated all those costs for solid waste. But Dawn and Chris are here. Dawn is, this is her first official budget as DPW director. She's sat in that other, she's sat in the other chair next to the Kyle Fox for a long time, but this is her first official budget. And across, Chris Peralta is the foreman down there at the transfer station for solid waste.
One quick question I had a little note to myself. As I'm going through, obviously, I know you mentioned it, but the health insurance has gone up. Are we going to be getting a total increase of the impact of increased health insurance?
Yes.
At some point?
When I give the, well, when we present this budget to the public hearing?
Deliberative session?
Public hearing first, which will be on the fifteenth of February, you'll have a total impact of health insurance. And actually, in my presentation on, on the, when I did this back in December, I don't have it here with me. I can get it. And I can tell you how much it was.
As I'm going through, I'm clearly saying that each health insurance is going up, and each worker's comp has gone down.
Worker's comp went up a little bit.
Oh, I thought it went down for most of them.
For most of them did, but one department it went up. Health insurance went up on average on this budget around seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the general fund.
Right.
And then eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars was worker's comp, went up. For most departments it went down, but there was one department where it went up.
Okay, because I'm going, at least the ones for this evening.
This evening, they all went down.
Down. So I think we just need to, for that health insurance, we just make, as you said, for the public, but also the deliberative session.
Yes.
Make an impact.
Yes, we'll have.
Highlight.
We'll have those statements for the county.
Health insurance issue. Okay. Sorry about that, Dawn. I had a little note and I had to get rid of it before.
Well, I have a little update or presentation to the whole, whole night here.
Okay.
You'll indulge me for a couple of minutes.
Sure.
Thank you for having us here tonight. And we are going to, prepared to answer any and all of your questions to the best of our ability. Just a little background, more for those at-home Public Works is comprised of six divisions. And tonight, we're here to present all six divisions. We've spent some time working on these budgets and to be able to present the best budget based on the needs of each one of the divisions. Keep in mind that each one of our divisions are very diverse in the work that we do for the town. I like to think of it as a common theme of the TV show Dirty Jobs, because a lot of our jobs are cleanup work. People don't necessarily see us. We're not always out in the forefront. We serve the needs of every resident, of every department, and every commute committee that's here in town as needed. Through highway, we deal with all of the roads, parks, one hundred and eighty-six miles, keeping them clean and passable to the best of our ability. The equipment maintenance division keeps all of our town vehicles, police, fire, ambulance, the highway crew, running so that they can reach all the residents when in need. The solid waste takes in all of the trash and debris from all the residents. So it's not on, not, not out on our roads and parks. Don't mind me, my tongue's twisted tonight. It's been twisted all afternoon.
Don't worry about it.
Waste water takes sewage from a little under half the town. They treat, disinfect and clean all of the effluent so that it can be released into the Merrimack River clean. They have permits that they have to meet through the EPA and the state of New Hampshire. There's all kinds of standards and requirements. Those standards and requirements are getting stricter every day. Buildings and grounds keeps our grounds clean and the systems running, the HVAC and the generators and everything that you would never even imagine. They raise and lower the flags. They do all kinds of stuff. Administration and engineering, well, we don't necessarily get dirty every day, but there are days where I came in quite, quite dirty. We design the needs of the town. We check any of the construction that's going on. You know, we're out there, believe it or not. So, and with our permits, we still have to meet certain standards, you know, from the state and the EPA. In building these budgets before you tonight, some of the lying items, like Paul has already said, are based on established costs for the personnel, insurances. Some are contractual. Those have gone up significantly in some cases, from outside sources, from contractors, from wherever. Some of the items, we were able to start from zero and build the budget up to what is required to get the work completed for the town. Now, I have done budgets for probably the last twenty, twenty-five years, but sitting on the other side. So it's different for me tonight to be able to sit on this side. But one of the things we have always done in preparing budgets is to base them on a zero-based budget. So that is my background, and that's where I go to. So please keep in mind, as you go through these budgets tonight, in the past year, we've made many changes in the personnel, both in administration and in the staffing throughout Public Works. One thing I did do tonight quickly was, in one of your sheets in your book, there is an overall for all of the divisions, all the, all the departments throughout. I took the Public Works and I, I put them into an Excel from what we had last year for budget, what we had this year for budget or proposed. And I came up with a nine point seven five percent decrease in overall for the department. Now, this does include the fueling station, which was a one point four. So that kind of skews this number. But generally, most all of our divisions have had a reduction in the costs. So with that, I will turn it over. Sorry.
Nope, that's perfectly fine.
Thank you for indulging me for a few minutes.
It gives a nice overall view, so that's fine. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I ask, the summary sheet, Dawn, that you referenced, the summary sheet, is that in, in the Excel?
It should be in your book, yes.
It's, it's, it's the first sheet. It's actually underneath summary by fund. That's the sheet that she took off of.
Yep.
It's not the pretty colored one where we use all different colors. It's the, it's in the Excel workbook. It's underneath summary by fund. Thank you.
And I just colored apartment, just so I could pull them off.
Excellent. So, good evening. There we go. Is that better? All right, thank you. Good evening. Hi, I'm Chris Peralta from the transfer station, the foreman. I've been fortunate this year. My budget is pretty straightforward and pretty consistent. The greatest changes we've seen are through contractual agreements, as Dawn alluded to. If you allow me, I like to go through them very quickly. The first one is the solid waste disposal through waste management. This is a five-year contract that runs from the fifteenth, December fifteenth of twenty-one, through December fourteenth of twenty-five. So as you can see, a portion falls under two rates for the coming year. So based on our anticipated tonnage, we took an average, and it went from seventy-nine twenty-five per ton to eighty-four sixty-three per ton as a tipping fee. On a similar note, our single stream recycling, also through waste management, and also a five-year contract that runs, however, from February first of twenty-two through January thirty-first of twenty-seven. If you remember from some of my previous presentations, our single stream recycling is comprised of three costs. The first of which is equipment rental, six hundred fifty dollars a month, that stays consistent throughout the contract. The second is transportation, which we see a nine dollar increase per haul every year. So for example, this coming year has gone from two hundred and twenty-nine dollars per haul to two hundred and thirty-eight dollars per haul. And the final component is a blended value of the market rates of the commodities that we collect. We're seeing a downward trend. For example, the highest of last year was a hundred and two dollars and sixty cents per ton with a, with a annual low of seventy-six forty-eight this past December. And all indications are that this trend's hopefully going to continue. And finally, the last portion of our tipping fees is the construction demo. This is also through a subsidiary of waste management, Resource. This is only a three-year contract, however, running from December fifteenth of twenty-one through December fourteenth of twenty-four. And similarly, we anticipated this split, and you'll see we went from a rate of ninety-seven dollars per ton to ninety-eight dollars and eight cents per ton. Continuing on through our budget, the only larger portion that we see a, a small change in is the special waste disposal. But it's important to point out that a lot of these costs are recovered through our fee structures, as well as any scrap metal that we recover. For example, an AC is dropped off, we charge fifteen dollars. We pay eight dollars to evacuate the freon, but we also get paid for that scrap metal once we dispose of it. I believe that is it. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have no idea what you were talking, sorry. Couldn't follow along with what you were saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like me to go back?
So, what were you saying about single stream? It's actually costing less?
The tipping fee is, yes. It's gone down from, so we have a, a ceiling amount right now?
Of a hundred and fifty dollars?
Correct, an annual ceiling. So we pay a monthly, a monthly fee. And this past calendar year, the high was over the summer, is in August, we paid a hundred and two dollars and sixty cents per ton. We've seen a downward trend this past six months. In December, the most recent month I have information for is only seventy-six dollars, forty-eight cents.
So why are we budgeting a hundred and fifty?
The unknown, the anticipation.
It's a cap. It's our cap number right now is a hundred and fifty dollars. And if things change, we'll be up to a hundred and fifty dollars. If the commodity markets change over like they did a couple of years ago, we'll be at the hundred and fifty dollar amount. And that hundred and two is, is, is just for the commodities, then you got to add in equipment rentals and the trip cost.
And hauling fee, correct.
And on top of it. So that we averaged, we were averaging about a hundred, we're saying we're going to average about a hundred and fifty dollars as a cap for single stream recycling for the year.
That's with the equipment rental and everything?
Yes, correct. Equipment rental, trips, and tonnage.
So is equipment rental in here somewhere else?
Nope.
No?
No, it's all rolled into this hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, but if we're only paying a hundred and two, or seventy-six, or something like that, I'm having a hard time putting those two together.
Well, that's only, that's only one portion. On top of that, the tipping fee is also the equipment rental and the hauling charge.
Well, how much is the equipment rental and hauling charge? I mean, can you give me some idea of how much that adds? Is it?
We can, we can get that for you, yes.
Forty-two dollars or something?
It's actually two hundred and twenty-nine dollars per haul. It's going to two hundred and thirty-eight.
Yeah, but I don't know how much that is per ton.
I'd have to, again, as factored, you'd have to look at how many hauls we did this past year.
We'll have to get that number for you.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Barbara?
So I'm equally a little confused. So are we making money on the recycle bills? Or are we in the pit?
It's almost a net zero.
Okay. And is, which is cheaper, solid waste?
Excuse me?
What's the debate?
It's not, it's not a net zero.
Well, it costs us money to get rid of.
It costs us money to get it.
Yeah, so we're under.
Right. What he's, what Chris is talking about when he says costs us net zero is that if we put it into the.
The trash.
The trash stream, it, it would balance itself out. So we're almost, what Chris is saying is what we're paying per ton to get rid of recycling is basically net zero to what we're paying for our, our trash.
So they're equal.
It's equal. It's equal. We still are paying to get rid of our single stream.
Where's, where's the delta, I guess? Because, I mean, looking at a hundred and fifty dollars per ton tipping fee versus eighty-four dollars per ton tipping fee for trash, I don't, where does the delta come in that makes us just about even?
What Chris is saying is that what we've paid.
Average what we paid over the last year.
Last year.
Not what we're budgeting.
Not what we're budgeting. It's what we paid over the last year. It's, it's, it's almost the same.
It averages pretty close to the eighty-four dollars.
Because, don't forget, the eighty-four dollars is just to put it in the truck, to take what's in the truck, to put it in the truck, it costs us money, to transport it, it costs us money. And that's where we have the, the rate of, I believe, a hundred and thirty-five dollars or so that we charge people, right, Chris?
Correct, yeah.
A hundred and thirty-five dollars because we've loaded those costs into that. So to get rid of that trash, it costs us a hundred and thirty-five. To get rid of single stream, it costs us a hundred and fifty dollars a ton, but we don't have to haul it. Somebody comes in, we're paying somebody to haul it. We're paying for the equipment rental. So the delta really is fifteen dollars a ton. On fifteen hundred tons would be... Adam, quick math, Adam.
You need to bring your calculator.
Supposed to have it. Twenty-two thousand five hundred. So that's the additional cost.
And that delta is the savings with single stream?
That would be the additional cost for single stream.
The additional cost of single stream.
First of all, throwing it in the trash.
Throwing it in the trash.
And we've been dealing with this for the last couple of years, that whole dilemma of.
That's why I asked the question, so that we would know, is it equally, is the price equal for single stream versus the waste, or is the single stream more expensive? At which point, we have to make a decision. And I think that's where we were last year, that it was a little bit more expensive.
Right. That's what we're saying right now.
But we, but we felt we could absorb that.
And that's basically what we're saying right now, depending on what markets do, about twenty thousand more a year for single stream.
Yeah, if we're at the top of the market.
Depending on what markets do.
Right.
Lot of assumptions in there.
Right. But if you're looking at top of market versus what we're paying for trash plus everything added in, it's twenty-two, twenty-two thousand dollars. Delta, single stream costs us if we're at top of market.
Barbara?
So what happens with the lithium batteries? Remember, I had that question. Do we collect them separately? Because they're very recyclable.
Absolutely. There's a spot in the recycling center.
Right. But what do we do with them after we got them?
Correct. We, we collect them and then we, we bag them and send them in.
To?
There's a company that does all the mercury, the lithium.
Okay, and they separate?
Correct.
The components?
Mm-hmm.
And what do we get back for that?
Nothing. It's, it's a, yeah.
So we're giving them the revenue. That's nice.
Well, but they're also doing the mercury items, too. It's almost a wash.
Okay.
It's almost like a charitable donation type thing.
We're setting up some flyers and some better bins and tables to be able to do that.
Yeah.
It's in the works.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Of course, there's always been the debate of, is recycling in fact being recycled? Or is it at some point just going into solid waste? We don't know what.
They take it to their recycling center.
Yes, we have assurances that it's recycled.
Yeah. But some of the recycling that gets put out there does end up in the waste stream because it's dirty or, but really, they've come, they haven't done an audit in a while, but our stuff has been pretty clean.
Right, right.
They haven't returned any of our loads, knock on wood, which is always a good sign, that it's pretty clean. But there is always the chance that some of the stuff gets thrown into.
Right. If it gets rejected, that's a different issue. But, you know, you know I'm talking about, that you're here, that the recycling is in fact eventually getting into just a solid waste. So if we're going, if that's in fact true, why are we, you know, why are we separating if that's where it's going to end up? But again, it has to do, we have to make a decision in terms of the cost difference. Is it worth, what, twenty-two thousand extra to do that or not? That's a value judgment we have to make, apparently.
And people do feel better about recycling.
Yep, and that's the value. Until you're in that line for twenty-five, thirty minutes trying to get into the building, and then, then people slip around the outside. And that's the advantage of retirement, you can go one off the line.
Maybe I'd be more than happy to retire if someone used to hand me the lottery ticket to win.
I could bring your trash.
Actually, the, the lines have not been bad on Saturday, except for last Saturday, or two Saturdays ago, it was, it was, you must have been there, because it took me a while, too, to get through. It was crazy. But I think everybody took Christmas and holidays and finally cleaned out what they had and wanted to bring it to the transfer station. But it, it was cra- I was there at nine o'clock and it was bad. And I was there again at eleven o'clock and it was bad. And I think it was bad most of the whole day. But normally, people get in and out within five minutes of the recycling center.
Any other questions for solid waste?
So, what's the deal with the trailer? I mean, you guys requested ninety-seven, and the town manager cut it by seventy thousand. What's going on?
No, no, we have, in this year's budget, there's ninety-five thousand. We have been going and getting.
There's ninety-seven for this year. And then the department requested ninety-seven for this current year, coming up. The town manager's budget says twenty-seven.
Yes. Depending upon what we do. So we've, we've got the prices, we're getting the prices together for the trailer itself. There's going to have to be site work done.
Yeah.
If we were to tie in to the leach field that's out there, that's going to take X amount of monies. If we had to make a new pad, if we moved the trailer around, reconfigure, which was one of our thoughts, but I think we've come down to, we're going to leave the trailer where it is and probably not do the facilities. But we might have to do some more concrete work around the trailer.
Potentially.
Potentially, when it comes.
The trail is a little bit longer that we're looking at, is a little bit bigger than the one we have. So we need to look at some things like that shed that sits behind, and then that porta potty, and we might have to expand some of the pad. As Dawn was saying, we were looking at trailers with a bathroom in it. However, in talking to the staff that's in there, there are two bathrooms that they can use in the recycle building or in the way you throw your trash. And they kind of like to get up and stretch their legs and walk over there to make sure the operation's running. So we took that into consideration, too, when we were looking at trailers. So at the time Dawn was doing the budget, she didn't know if she was going to have to do some excavation with, with septic and all that. But after talking to the gentleman that were up there and the staff that were up there, we decided we don't have to do that. We might just have to do some site work around. We might have to put a little bit of a fence to block the snow from hitting the building so it doesn't rot like this one did. So that, that's why we left a little bit of money, twenty-seven thousand dollars, actually twenty-five thousand dollars in there for some site work. And then two thousand dollars is just, was extra money for another.
Is that a new idea, wireless traffic counter?
It's something I brought up when Kyle was still here, just trying to get a sense of some of our seasonal highs, our weekly highs, that sort of thing, get a feel for our busier days for staffing.
So we did look into where the leach field actually is today and what it would take to get up there. And it, it wasn't going to be an easy task.
Wasn't a pretty site.
No.
And it doesn't mean that much to them, so it's not. Would that allow for a little bit increase in size of the trailer itself?
Yes. Yes. Right now, I believe it's a ten by forty.
Correct.
And we were looking at twelve by sixty.
Ah, so significant.
So it's got two separate offices at each end, and then a large main section where they can have a break room, be able to have, you know, a small refrigerator and microwave and whatnot, and be able to have their lunch, lunch breaks and whatnot in there. They are very bright, as opposed to what's there now. It's all dark and hanneling.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They're very bright, they're good lights. We were looking into an option of getting the twelve by sixty as a used one to save some money on that. But we still might have to do some more site works. Therefore, that's why we were asking for the additional funds.
So what timeline are you expecting? Maybe spring? Hopefully? I mean, we've been talking about this for a while.
Yes. We're, we're, it's all coming together, and we were hoping it would have been together already. She said she was going to have our estimate a couple of weeks ago, and we still haven't seen it. We have gotten a couple other estimates, but they aren't complete. So she's working on the delivery, the setup, the whole nine yards for us.
And hauling away the old one.
I'm sorry?
And hauling the old one away.
Hauling the old one, right. And they, they're going to look at it to see if they can rehab it, or if it's worth it, or, you know, if it's better to just have us take it and put it somewhere and use it for storage.
So when's this decided? It should be fairly quick.
Yes.
Okay.
Unless we do a new build. If we do a new build, it's coming from Georgia.
The other thing, too, with the site work, it's just not dirt, moving dirt around. It's hooking up electricity, hooking up telephones, internet, all that other stuff that would need to go on as well. So we did put a little money in this year's budget in case we need to do some of that. We're planning, we're planning around the June timeframe, hopefully June-ish for delivery. So if we do need to use some of this money, it's there for next year.
We found that the monies, the ninety-five thousands, basically just covering the unit. And it didn't cover anything additional. Of course, costs have gone up since we originally.
And will continue to, too.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Andy? Nancy? Anybody? None? Okay. I guess we can move on to wastewater, which is number thirty-one. Which is number thirty-one. I think it's important to make sure that everyone knows this is basically tax neutral. It's based on fees, what, what's the fund?
A sewer fund, sewer enterprise fund.
Enterprise fund, that's the word I was looking for. So when we're talking about the money's here, doesn't mean we can't be as critical.
Right.
Clearly, but.
It's based on user fees.
User fees.
It doesn't come out of your tax base. Leah, this is Leo's first budget with the, uh, in the hot seat, so to speak.
Be with me, I will do my best.
I have thirty-one on my tab.
It's on your tab, it's probably. It's ten in the computer system.
So I should have two things, the computer and.
Wastewater, yeah, wastewater, it used to be Department Ten.
Ah.
So it's, but it's thirty-one in the book because it was, that's where we put it at the end. Um, Leo's here, like I said, this is Leo's first budget in the hot seat. Um, it is a user fees based budget. Um, and there are some significant cost increases in some of his line items that he will be going over and explaining why that. Um, his, uh, his department's made up of, uh, non-union, two non-union people. Uh, the Teamsters or, um, Union and the Ask Me Two-Nine-Eight-Six Union. Um, like in solid waste, Two-Nine-Eight-Six is in contract, those costs are increased for salaries, Teamsters are not, so those costs are not included. That would be a separate warrant article for any, uh, bargaining contracts that we bring forward this year. As in years past.
Their, their base costs for this year would be rolled over to next year because if we didn't get in a contract, they would continue to get paid out of it.
Yeah, they get paid their base.
So that's in here, just not any increase.
Not any increases, correct.
Sorry, just not any increases.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, go for it.
All right, I'll do my best. Um, I think I'll go line by line here, so although Paul mentioned that the electricity has already been taken care of on the town manager's side. I, I just would like to point out that. Um, that is definitely driven by the process at the plant that sometimes we may not have any control over. Just for instance, the last couple of three-inch rain events, uh, caused us to go through about a thousand gallons of sodium bisulfite. Uh, at four dollars a gallon. Um, you know, that's things that we can't control. Um, so just want everybody to be mindful of that, but we, we do our best, um, to save energy where we can. Um, it's one of our biggest costs in all reality. Um, so we always have to be mindful of the process and doing things to save money. Over, from two thousand two to, uh, to now, we went down from. Uh, annual kilowatt usage of four million seven hundred thousand plus, uh, down to about two million two hundred and twenty-eight thousand kilowatt hours. So, um, you know, if we were paying, using the same amount of electricity as we were, then, uh, our electric rate, uh, cost would be significantly higher than it is now. Uh, one of the other bigger pressures, and these are all, uh, related to our, our, um, NPDS permit, uh, which we're required to meet. Excuse me? Uh, I apologize, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, which is issued by the United States EPA. And it spells out all types of things, the amount of BOD that can enter the rivers and streams and what the chlorine residual is and the ECOI levels are. So chemicals are one of the bigger drivers that we have, um, to meet these permits.
Yeah.
To keep the town in compliance and keep us from being fined or, or maybe going into, uh, what's, it's not receivership, I forget the exact word right now. So you'll see there's a significant cost in the chemicals. Um, we literally had the bisulfite go from two dollars a gallon to four dollars a gallon in one year. Um, sodium hypochlorite as well, a lot of this is driven by markets, fuel, so on and so forth. Because we bid the chemicals and we don't put a delivery charge, and we don't allow a delivery charge so that we can keep. The cost of the chemicals steady throughout the fiscal year and not get fuel surcharges on our deliveries and so forth. Uh, we pay a little bit higher cost, but then it does stabilize the cost of the chemicals to the town over the course of the year. Um, so you see that, now, some of these could dip back down, it's hard to say. Uh, sodium hypochlorite went up, well, sodium hypochlorite actually was a couple dollars a gallon the previous fiscal year. Um, before I took over and it, it dropped back slightly to a dollar eighty-nine. Um, the polymer for the screw press, there's only one company that makes that polymer now. Um, and it's really the name your price tool, if you will, we call them and they give us a number for the year, so. Um, overall, since COVID, uh, the pressures on, on the price of chemicals and many other things are just, you know, significant. Bulking agent, uh, absolutely necessary to run the composting operation. Uh, we generate probably between the sales of compost and taking outside sludges. Uh, if you don't throw septic in there, it's about a little more than a half a million dollars a year, give or take. There's also cost avoidance to the town, because we take the sludges from other towns. Um, we're offsetting, if we, we're charging about seventy, roughly seventy-two dollars a wet ton to these other nine communities that are bringing sludge to us. Uh, we produce about five thousand wet tons of our own. Um, we are now at a point where we take more sludge from other towns than we produce ourselves. Um, so yeah, there's about a three hundred thousand dollars offset there for, for the town of Merrimack residents, uh, through the composting operation. And part of that is, is the bulking agent. And I will say that we're very fortunate to have a couple of really good sawdust vendors. Who, uh, during the early part of COVID, actually held the sawdust prices for a couple of years, I don't know if you recall that. Um, but have been willing to take modest increases. Um, and it's just something we have to have to, to do business. So there, there is a slight increase there, I'm hoping that we'll be able to negotiate a reasonable increase, uh, with them, say three percent or so. Let's see, the other big item is maintenance machinery. That went up, even though the, the plant's gonna be new and many times when you, when you build a new facility and you figure your operating costs are gonna go down. There's still pieces and parts of the infrastructure that were installed when I got here in two thousand six that are now coming of age. Um, one of the things that is really hurting is the price of motors, variable frequency drives which are used to control the speed of motors that save us all that electricity that I talked about. Um, couple of them, something that we used to pay twelve thousand dollars for is now a twenty-four thousand dollar item. Uh, it takes us one bad electrical storm like I had last June, we lost three V, three VFDs in the sludge processing building. Uh, that I had to have replaced within a three-month period. Just something you can't control, but unfortunately, when you do need to, to get these pieces and parts, um, the cost has just gone up significantly. Um, so that explains that increase there. Couple of the other ones, office equipment, it's, it's everything, everything, the just, I can't believe the price of everything that, um. We pay now, uh, compared to what we used to, so some of these other increases are not crazy. Um, that is reflective of what we're paying. Um, just like safety equipment for the guys. COVID, I used to pay fifty dollars a case for latex gloves, we use latex gloves all the time. Universal precautions, much like police and fire when they, they go to have seen, people are handing, you know, human waste. Um, we used to pay fifty dollars a case, COVID came along, almost tripled. Now they, they've come back down, but we're still about, you know, twice what we used to pay for those types of things, so. All types of safety equipment have increased for us as well. I think those are the, the, the big items, uh, that you'll see on there. Um, I apologize.
Manhole covers.
Oh, manhole covers, I apologize, yes, manhole covers, and the sewer use fund too, I, I should mention that, that we added ten thousand dollars. Um, to, we didn't, this year we had to replace some covers at the last minute. We didn't really have the, the fund set aside for it, so we managed to find the funds, but we added that in there, but every year we always, we purchase. Uh, I'm not gonna remember the number off the top of my head, Paul, I have to be honest. Is it thirty-five or thirty or so covers? Um, as a matter of fact, we just bid a bunch.
That you replace?
Every time like, uh, we do a road project, we try and go out and replace the covers, so we just. If you recall the la- one of the last meetings I was at, we talked about some of the manhole covers that got, uh, getting replaced over off of Continental, I believe it is. We provided those, so we always have a stockpile of covers.
Okay.
Saves the town money by having those on hand. Martinez will get hired a lot of times to do these cover replacements, and then we already have them in stock and, and we, we put those out there.
And it's not just. Replacing in kind, we're going to a new cover, which is supposed to be better, uh, for back injuries in the department. So they're the flip top.
Yeah.
The flip tops, instead of the pick up and move, you flip it over.
They hinge and lock.
Hinge.
And that, the other thing is, is like, if you've ever had a manhole cover that rocks in front of your house. We used to get called, I mean, you put something called Rappo out there, it's, uh, like, uh, almost like a glue to keep the cover down. These covers don't rock because they have a hinge and a latch. And they also prevent, especially in the cross-country run vandalism. So we had some manholes that were popped a few years back, um, and people have decided to throw all kinds of stuff down there and, you know, cause an SSO auto off, off of ever turnpike. I forget what year that was, so these, these help prevent that, so. Very, very important.
So you're upgrading as you're going?
Yes, yes, as we, yes, as the roads get done and covers get changed, we're, we're upgrading to those covers, yep.
Whenever we upgrade the roads, um, do a major paving type along the road like we did on, um.
Well, you did some on DW Highway, right?
We did some on, yeah. Yeah, we did that with a little bit. Um, Turkey Hill, that's what I was thinking. Um, we replaced the, the covers as we, you know, went down through, so that we're not ripping up the road again. Cause a lot of them, things have deteriorated through the years and they needed, like you said, needed to work, um, stop the rocking and.
They probably, they go to recycle. So we, we have a, we have a very large, uh, metal scrap pile out, out back. So over the years, um, we've accumulated pumps and motors and. So as Paul and Adam can attest, every once in a while, we load up the forty-yard roll-off and we go up to Schnitzers. And we recycle it all and then whatever money that we get goes back, comes back to the town. Um, we actually got, uh, 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 like, uh, add a boy from them, cause we had all this copper wire and brass and stuff that we bought. And then we went up in a pickup truck and then we got, I think we got like. Five to six thousand dollars in, in cash that came back to the town for bringing that stuff and recycling it, so. That stuff all gets recycled.
Does that come back to the wastewater fund?
Yes, goes back to the fund, yeah.
Questions, Andy?
Yeah, just a couple of questions on eighty-three eighty-one, and I apologize for those on the paper book, you're not gonna be able to follow along. But if, if you go to eighty-three eighty-one, there's a, a note on that cell and it says, requested increase to account for unanticipated costs. And increased cost to replace manhole covers. But then if I go down just to eighty-five oh five, there's another line that says manhole cover replacement for, for thirty-five thousand. I just wanna make sure we're not double, double counting manholes here.
That's a good one. Okay, here we go, I'm sorry, yeah, I found it.
So it's eighty-three eighty-one versus eighty-five oh five.
Thank you, I, I found the eighty-five oh five, I apologize. Oh, that's the, that's the ten thousand dollars, the ten thousand dollar line? Yeah, that is to actually install covers, not the covers themselves. Sorry, that's, so we, we, that's what I was mentioning, we decided to add ten thousand dollars into that line because we got. There were some manholes that needed to be replaced on DW Highway. And they want, they needed to be done quickly, and so we hired, we figured the cost of Martinez installation for one day. To cover those unanticipated costs, so that if we need to do manhole covers in, in a hurry. We'll have money in the budget to hire Martinez.
Was that eighty?
It's not, that's not covers, that's installation of covers.
That's eighty-three eight one is installation?
Yes, sorry.
No, that's okay.
That makes sense.
It says maintenance on there, so it's maintaining the covers, whereas the infrastructure is the actual purchase of the cover.
Yep. It's just a crew like that can come in and do, I don't know, what can they do, like ten, twenty covers in a day or something like that?
Cause I had a highlight.
Yep, no, good question, Councilor Hunter, yes.
Thank you, you had me stumped there for a second, I apologize.
Oh, that wasn't the intent.
No, 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 no.
Definitely was not the intent.
Nonetheless, I, yes.
Um, the, the other question I have is eighty-two forty-five. Uh, Sewer City of Nashua, there's quite a bit decrease in that particular line. Um, and, and if you look at the, the questions. Or the comments in the, the cell that asked a question, has this been negotiated? So I just wanna make sure if we're gonna, if we're counting a decrease in li- line, we're confident that that number's going down. Cause there's a question in there, has this been negotiated? I don't know the answer to that.
Right, that was a question of Paul because it, it appeared though as we were budgeting more than we needed to for quite a while.
Okay.
That number hasn't really changed with the city of Nashua, and so I, I'm pretty comfortable because that, that pump station is pretty well maxed out. It's split between Merrimack and Nashua, we just get three hundred and fifty gallons a minute and it's been pretty steady. Um, the rate's been steady, um, and so at least for the next fiscal year. It was probably more money that needed to be in there in an effort to, you know, keep the budget low like Dawn is looking to do. Um, that's what we did, we did.
Perfect.
Excuse me, decreased it.
Okay, thanks.
So this is the Penetech.
Yeah.
Pump station, there's a small amount of Merrimack that actually goes to Nashua. And someday, one of the major master plan projects is to turn that pipe and to bring it back to our own. But until that happens, we still have to go out to Nashua and unfortunately, we're at the maximum amount of people. Or ho- homes that we can actually.
Okay.
Send that way.
Yeah, it was just a question in the cell that.
Yeah.
Kind of was, it was an open-ended question, I wanna just make sure we answered that, so.
Yeah, it was a discussion we had because. Last year, the previous director said it's going up, it's going up, it's going up, and we haven't seen that.
Okay.
The prices have been pretty constant each quarter.
Thank you.
Oh, no problem.
You all set, Andy? Barbara, did you? Nancy? You all set?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I have a question, actually, I might be, as I'm looking at it, I might. Okay, eighty-three fifty-nine, other outside services. You'd request a three hundred and ninety thousand and Paul put in four hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Yes.
Does that have to do with the, it looks like it's the various testing and stuff, go ahead.
Um, it's the administrative charge. It's the administrative charge. Um, that went up significantly based on, uh, our calculations of their budget. DPW's budget as a whole. Versus, it's, it's how we calculate the administrative charge, that went up and that's what the difference is from.
Ah, okay.
It's what we charge them to do their payroll, their legal, Dawn's time and Dawn spending a lot more time down there than. We thought because of the, um, upgrade.
Cause the ways, it just is confusing to me, unless I'm just not getting it. Cause it has allocation of general fund administrative costs, three hundred and ninety thousand.
Yep.
And then it has all the other costs below it having to do with water analysis, testing and all that. That looks like it's the part that went up, or added on to it.
It, it wa- it increased a little bit, but that was in their three ninety figure.
Correct.
From three eighty-eight, they went to three ninety, tho- those, that was the cost that went up for everything underneath the administrative cost, which is about two thousand dollars. The administrative cost went up from the forty-nine thousand dollars.
Which isn't reflected there.
Which isn't reflected in their budget, it was reflected in the manager's budget.
Ah.
So that three hundred and ninety thousand is the.
TNA cost.
Your new number?
Yes, that's the new number for administrative fees, yes.
It'd be convenient somehow if you could show.
Exactly.
Where that change is or.
We are working on that based on our last discussion with, uh, our last meeting to get some more information on these Excel spreadsheets for you.
That's, yeah, I was getting confused, cause that seemed like a dramatic.
Yeah.
Usually.
I'm, I, I thought I was missing something.
We try to keep three years, uh, if you looked in general government, we try to keep three years of what was budgeted there, so people can see what's going on. We'll start trying to do that more consistently, some of the bigger items in administrative costs and things of that sort, to try to keep. The council aware of, of the last couple of years of what we budgeted, but that's where it's all from.
Yeah, I see there, it's basically a seven percent. Yeah, I see there. It's basically a seven percent overall increase, but as you said, Dawn, you're, you prepped us for that. But there's been a lot of increases. I mean, just the chemicals, I noticed it was a dramatic.
Oh, yeah.
Chemicals, electricity and the maintenance are, are big.
Equipment, infrastructure.
Yeah, big hits in this department. And like Leo said, that, uh, you can't. You can't process this stuff if you don't have the chemicals and the chemical numbers that we had in the budget the last couple of years were on the low end. And then electricity is, is electricity. We, you know, we have a good month with, uh, with compost and. You know, in the wintertime, it gets cold. Then we gotta run the heaters to keep.
Exactly.
And the, the sludge from freezing and things of that sort. And it could be expensive to run the heaters, the natural gas heaters. But we also have electricity to keep the slurry moving around and things of that sort when it gets cold out, so it doesn't freeze. So some of our electric costs do go up in the wintertime.
Yep.
And the other thing with the electricity too is we went from six point nine cents a kilowatt to nine point nine cents. And as he said, two million kilowatts on average for a year. But that three cents adds up quickly.
And again, we can only do so much. It depends on, you know, what Anheuser-Busch does, um, and what other industries do and send to us. Um, weather dependent on how much aeration we have to use and chemicals. So some of it is, we can only control so much of it. I mean, we do our best, but some of it is really. To meet permit, we have to, we have to do what we have to do. Makes it tough. We're always mindful.
These big storms, the heavy rains have caused a lot of havoc down there. Um, and I will say, when I went through this, the wastewater is seven, seven point five percent increase. This one of the two.
Yep.
Um, divisions.
Barbara?
So in that same section, uh, the flagger for working in the railroad right away. Now, I, I know in order to get onto the property, you have to cross the railroad. But there's nothing happening over there. So what's the flagger for?
So that is, that money is in there. Most of the interceptor runs along the railroad track. And you cannot do any work in that railroad right away.
So it.
Without, without hiring a flagger and it's, I believe it's fifteen hundred dollars a day. For them to work out there.
So in other words, if you have to go and, and go into the right of way under the tracks, you have to.
Yeah. On the track, some of the, some of the interceptors right on adjacent to the railroad tracks.
Right.
And it's illegal for us to be out there without their flagger.
We, we actually have a pump station.
Right.
That is literally in the right of way, that if we have to go out there and do any work besides checking out to make sure it's okay. We have to call Pan Am to get a flagger out there, even if there's no train running. We have to have a flagger.
As part of the Sahigan Pump Station upgrade, there was, there was allocation made in the contract documents for a flagger for Pan, well, it's not Pan Am. And I think it changed again, right? CSX took over, but yeah, I'm pretty sure. But anyways, there, there was allocation in there for railroad flagger that they have, the railroad has a lot of power. And you can't be on their property without, without their permission, despite the fact that you'll see four-wheelers running up and down the tracks there. If they got caught, I mean, there are railroad police. I've seen them there. They're rarely there in time to catch anybody, but I do see them there. So.
So help me understand, you said something about variable frequency motors.
Drives.
Drives that, um, are susceptible to electrical storms?
Correct. So basically you're taking, uh, you're taking the voltage, boy, I'm try, I'll try not to be too tight. You're taking, uh, say four hundred and eighty volts and you've got a hundred horsepower motor. You don't wanna, back in the old days, a lot of motors just ran at full speed, no matter what. Or they had some sort of mechanical hand crank drive that you'd have trouble with. It would seize. Now you take that voltage and you regulate it and the motors are built to, to go up and down the speed. So they're, they're on the grid. So if the grid gets hit with an electrical strike or some sort of a bump, somebody hits a utility pole. You know, causes almost like a wave to go through the wires and that shockwave can actually damage a variable frequency drive. Um, electrical storms are probably more, probably just like if your TV got hit, you know, lightning strike or something like, it's the exact same idea. Um, and all it takes is if it, it burns out one circuit in that circuit board, then the, the drive doesn't function as it should. So it's kind of a catch twenty-two. They save the town or the taxpayers a lot of money. Because you're not running that hundred horsepower motor at full speed all the time. You know, a lot of the time you can, you can run it at half speed. So you realize the significant cost savings. So when I was talking earlier about going from four million kilowatt hours. Down to two million kilowatt hours, the, the way we've achieved that is through all these upgrades that we've done. We've installed all these variable frequency drives and high efficiency motors and things like that to get you those kinds of savings. But unfortunately, you're also susceptible on, on, on the other side to things like that. So overall, I would say, you know, we're farther ahead of the game with them than without them, quite frankly.
Okay, and it's not practical to, to protect them?
Oh, I'm not saying, they do have some protection. We have surge protectors, but you know, a lightning, a lightning strike is, you know, I, I can't. I don't know how, how to explain it, but you know, surge protector or not, it could be more voltage than it could handle. So yes, there are, there are protection devices in there, but they don't always work. And so in the smaller the drive. The less protections, devices they have. A lot, unfortunately, you won't wanna hear this, but some of the drives less than five thousand dollars are not even repairable. They're a throwaway, if you can believe that. So we have a two hundred horse aeration blower drive that we're waiting to have rebuilt. Because the new one was thirty-eight thousand dollars and to get it rebuilt was like. Fifteen thousand dollars. So it sort of made sense to have it rebuilt if we could. So that's what we're doing. But those smaller drives, like I described, if something happens to them, they're not, they're really not repairable. You, you throw them away and you get another one. But that can add up pretty quick, you know?
Okay. But you think you have as much adequate surge protection on those as you can?
Um, as much as we can, as each upgrade goes along, they get the latest and greatest protection that's available at the time. Um, just like we will now with this current upgrade. But yeah, there's, and I, and I assure you that we're not the only treatment plants that, that go through this.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure. I'm just, I'm, I'm asking for clarification. People are gonna ask, why are we spending money on motors that we throw away with an electrical storm and?
Yeah, well, the, and again, so just to be clear, the, the drive, the VFD is not the motor. The motor is not the whole thing. And actually, the VFD many times will protect the motor. That takes the hit, not the motor. So, you know, instead of losing both things, you lose the drive instead of the motor.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Um, I lost my. While I was talking, I lost my computer. Hang on a second. I was trying to help.
So, so when the project is all over, we'll have to make sure we have a open house day so that everybody can see what's been done and.
Yeah. Getting there.
Not too warm. Spring will be good. Alright, I think I lost it. Never mind. You were saved. Any other questions?
Oh, operating equipment, compost blowers?
Compost blows, yes. So.
We replace, how, how many do we have and how many do we replace annually?
So there's, uh, fifteen bays. There's seventy-five blowers total. So each zone of the compost facility, these are smaller blowers, you know, one horse. And you're composting, so you have to provide oxygen, carbon source and, and a food source. In order to make it go, just like you're composting at home, but we're doing it at an accelerated, accelerated rate. Um, that's a very corrosive atmosphere out there. And instead of putting all these blows into the project, we decided to do them out of the budget, more cost effective, cause we're using in-house help. The mechanics are the ones who are uninstalling and reinstalling the new blowers. And so we spread it out over a five-year plan, doing fifteen a year. Five years to, and change them out that way. It's just necessary. Uh, this was, is the third year, I believe. So there's two years left. The problem with that is we've had to increase the cost of them, cause when we started the five-year program every year, that they going up on us.
No, prices are increasing?
Yeah, right. Surprise. Are you surprised?
So it says something like fifteen per year for five years? Is that?
Yes.
And fifteen at five K each or something?
Make all seventy-five blows would be pretty much changed out. Instead of doing them under a project. So you know, we're not bonding it or anything like that. And the mechanics are doing it themselves. They're building the new bases and it's just. It, it's, actually saves money to do it this way. This is a, this is a project that's doable for our help. You know, some things, some things will get too big and you can't, you know, you just don't have the equipment to do some of the stuff that like Methuen Construction can do for us right now. We just, you just can't do it. It's, you don't have the help or the, the equipment to do it, you know?
So it's really a maintenance issue?
Yeah, re, yeah, it is. Yes.
So is this a, an ongoing, gonna constantly turn around?
I would, I would think after a year, five, that we should be good for at least another ten with the, the first five that went in. Cause the other ones were pretty much original, other than a few here and there that we changed. And then what this prevents is having a catastrophic failure, because again, we're generating revenue out there. So we really need to have all the bays operating, cause most of our revenue is coming from sludge that's not Merrimack's now. Um, since we put the screw press in, we've reduced our tonnage. We used to make ten thousand wet tons of our own and now we're down below six. And so most of that sludge now is from outside. So Hooksett and Jaffrey and Sunapee and Winchester. And Henneker and Bristol and see if I can name more.
What we had found, um, in going through this budget was that the amount that was held in that twenty-seven thousand. From last year does not cover the full fifteen. And that number was kept from a couple of years previous and had never been upgraded. And it should have been upgraded last year to reflect, um, the cost increase. So that's why there's such a big jump from this year.
It's a catch-up.
Yes, yes. This, this is an actual for this year to buy, be able to buy the full fifteen of them.
Okay. They're less than twenty-five hundred dollars. They're a little more than twenty-five hundred dollars a piece for a blower. And that's the, the latest quote we have. We're gonna replace all seventy-five within five years. And, and.
And so what I guess I.
Twenty to thirty years with these, hopefully.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Don't say that.
Stuff that was made in nineteen seventy-two with steel is now being made with plastic.
Right.
So we're hoping that, that they will last as long.
And those blow, those, actually those blowers, for what it's worth, call them are pretty robust. And, uh, the previous maintenance manager worked with this, the company that's making them to make sure that they were robust. Um, so they're probably a little bit more than you pay for something off the shelf. But I, I firmly believe they're gonna last longer than something else that we would have bought.
So we're hoping it's twenty, twenty-five years. Fifty would be nice. Uh, you know, we're looking at twenty to twenty-five years on these.
Alright, well, I won't be in the budget cycle when you need to replace the series.
Probably me either.
Any other, any other questions?
No.
Okay, all set.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Luke.
And next is highway, which in the book is zero eight. Where is it on the?
Zero eight. It's zero eight. The only one that's different is wastewater.
Oh, okay. So. So I can go with what I have.
So, so Lori's the seasoned professional when it comes to budget in this group. She's been doing it for what, about seven years now, Lori?
Seasoned, see, isn't that?
Eight, eight years now. Garage and everything. She's, she's been around.
She's done, but, but.
They're all looking at her going, how did you do it?
So, you know, Lori is here, you know, uh, she spent a, a long night last night. With the storms and, and that we've had and it's been, uh, for no snow until January, it's been a rough January for the highway division. And I just wanna commend the guys for doing what they've done over the last couple of storms and actually. They got, we got the big foot snowstorm and then we got two significant rainstorms right after. And to not have the flooding issues that other communities have had, it says a lot about those guys going out there and making sure that the storm drains were clear.
Right.
And, you know, and, and getting the roads plowed. And then this last storm was kind of.
Weird.
Weird, because it was snowing and then it stopped and then it started again and then it turned to rain and then it turned to snow, sleet. So it was, it's a weird storm to plow. But, uh, everybody down at the highway garage should be commended for the, their effort in this, uh, the last couple of storms and keeping the town open.
They're about as reliable as you can get, in my opinion.
And the good thing for Lori now, right now, is she's only down one snowplow driver this year.
You just cursed her.
I did not curse her. I did not curse her. She's down one and, uh, hopefully, but that's. Even if I cursed her, she's happy because last year she was down.
Oh, yeah.
It was scary. A lot of storms, we were wondering if we were gonna get the roads plowed, but we, they got it plowed. And that's the other thing, you know, even though they were down, they went out there and plowed those roads and made sure they were open so people can go to work and school and everything else. So they do deserve a lot of credit.
Yeah.
Um, and they are, they are the behind the scenes people. They really are.
And with that.
Now I'm on. Thank you. I will pass that along to the crew. Um, so I don't have a lot of changes, but I'll go over what I do have. Um, in eighty-two, one, two, their equipment rental. Um, the RC mower that we rent to mow the, um, stormwater retention and detention basins. Um, went up a thousand dollars for a week, but it is really an imperative piece of equipment that we rent each year. It cleans all our, again, like I said, detention and retention ponds. Also, we took it over to the transfer station and did the steep slopes. Um, that we had been doing with the sidewalk mowers, but we did it in one day. So it wa, really saved us a lot of time over there. Um, I believe we also used it on some of the sewer easements. Uh, so we will, um, help with those next year as well. Um, in eighty-three hundred, that went down three thousand dollars, cause that was a one-time, uh, training. Eighty-three, twenty-one in maintenance buildings. I added in some money for gutters along the new highway garage. Um, with the roof line, it is the snow melt is melting overnight and icing. Um, and we had a lot of safety concerns last year, slips and falls. Uh, so we just wanna eliminate that if we can with some gutters along those roofs. Um, we're the first ones to respond to an emergency situation and we're coming into a hazard. So we wanna make sure our guys can get to the trucks and get, get to the job safely. Uh, eighty-three, twenty-two maintenance grounds. Um, again, just a small increase for wood fence repairs. Uh, this year, we'd like to tackle the one at Bishop Field. Um, it is wood fence. And there's a lot of maintenance with wood fences. It is really rotten. Um, we've been holding it together and piecing it together. Um, but the posts have rotten, rotted out, uh, so we need to do some replacement, uh, with that. We did not have much of an increase in eighty-three, forty-one, the sand and salt. That's usually one of our large items, but, um. The prices for salts have actually gone, got, are starting to come down and for gravels as well. So we should see that, um, come down next year, hopefully more. Um, in eighty-three, fifty-nine, other outside services, one of our large decreases is the street sweeping item. Um, we came down forty thousand in that one line item. Uh, we stopped using sand in our winter operations when we started using, uh, magnesium chloride. Uh, pre-wetting the salt at the spinner. So we do not have to clean that sand up in the spring anymore. Um, we went from having to two sweepers and our ten-wheel dump truck for forty days in the spring. To eighteen days. So that was, uh, that was a win. That was a win for us. Um, so that also allows us, uh, for emergency spill cleanup, um, gives us some.
Do you use the sand still on the non? Where do you still use the sand?
On the dirt roads. We use the sandstone mix on the gravel roads.
And what about, so we might as well get this out of the way because you're talking about it. Where do we use, Brian?
Yeah, that's what I was making.
Um, so we're concentrating right now on Continental Boulevard in the Wellhead Protection area.
Right.
Um, we would like to build that up and expand. Um, and start doing the loop of Continental Camp Sergeant up around Nattacook and Amherst. And that's a really good loop, um, that would, would give us, um, in the Wellhead Protection area coverage.
And now in those Wellhead Protection Areas or the people who have um. Wells. Um, what do you use on, do you, do you limited salt?
We use no salt in residential areas unless it is a, an ice situation. Um, we use limited on our collector and arterials in the Wellheads.
Right. I think that answers most of the questions that have been. Out there in the public about where do we use salt, why don't we, where don't we use salt and, and uh, where do we use brine? Heard some good news today, not to take away from Lori, but some good news today, the state of New Hampshire has contracted with a vendor. To do industrial and Continental all the way up to Penetra Square that uses brine. So brine will be used in that area too, so that will help protect wells one, uh, two and nine. And then uh, we'll go from there.
Well, that's a win.
That is really good news.
That, that is, that was a win today, I just found out today, I was talking to MBD about another issue. But uh, that was a win there and I just, but I wanted to get it out there, the word to people that we do use this stuff. And in neighborhoods during a storm or after a storm, you have several different areas you do, you do stop signs, hills.
Yep, we call them um, intersections, curves and hills.
So, you know, so it's not a full-blown. Dropping salt all the way through a neighborhood, sometimes it's just.
No, you'll, you'll see us out scraping for days afterwards, that's, that's our attack is to get it mechanically.
Yeah, I've noticed that already in this last. So.
Good, yeah, we have had a learning curve, I have to explain that, we, we did have some bumps and bruises in our first couple little storms. Um, we have a lot of new employees that. We're learning, um, and we have a lot of equipment that we need to, to fine-tune for them to use, so. We're working on it, but yeah, learning curve there.
And the last, the last thing that I want the people to know, and Lori can speak more about this, is on all our spreaders, we have. Ground controls.
Ground speed control?
Yes.
We um, yes, we have uh, spreader controls, we calibrate our trucks, both our um, salt and our liquids, so um. We can control them, uh, they slow down, it, and it slows the uh, rate of application as you're. As you're going, as you're stopping, it will slow down and as you're accelerating, it speeds up. Um, but we are working with the um. Salt Reduction Committee to um, yep, to uh, get, set some goals and um. And with the states working, they're cooperating with us as well, attending the meetings.
Which was interesting, because when we talked to DOT, if you remember, they said they didn't have that calibration on their trucks. Particularly on Continental.
On, on, they don't require it on their.
Privates.
Private contractors, but on their state-owned trucks, they.
Some of them they set, the ones that hit the highway, they're not sure about the other ones that don't hit the highway.
Right, but I just wanted everybody to be aware, including the council, that we do take. The salting and, and the sanding very seriously and the environment and how it affects the environment. And we try to do what's best for the town, um, we went to the magnesium last year, tested that out, that seems to have worked. To keep uh, from injuries, because guys were getting up on the trucks to break up the salt when it gets wet, you know? It sticks together and that, that seems to have worked. And uh, we're going to brine where we can go to brine and we're, we're investing in these, these. Environmentally friendly-er ways to apply and keep the road safe.
Well, I know we've talked about it for the last couple of years, so now we're getting into the actual result, the outcome that we wanted, so. Nancy, did you?
Yeah, just wanted to, to add to what Paul said, um, there was a hearing last week um, on SB five eleven. Um, and it's a bill that Senator Chanley filed um, on behalf of us, I'm a co-sponsor and I know we have a, a number of other um, co-sponsors as well. And one, it was great, I was able to actually text Paul during the hearing, because one of the things that was raised by. A question by the DOT was that Merrimack, um, basically we're asking something of the DOT that we don't do ourselves. And it was great, because Paul was able to clarify, I mean, we do indeed use brine, um, and that was really helpful, I made sure that that got into the, the record. Um, but you know, I, I know we, we've had a couple of meetings with the MBD and the DOT in the last couple of weeks. And um, this bill is going to go forward, um. Right now, the, the DOT is subcontracting some of the work, but we wanna make sure that. Um, that they continue to do that, um, and you know, to either do it themselves, following what we need, um, the appropriate um. Uh, requirements for decreased use of salt and increased use of brine, which is actually less expensive overall. Um, and uh, we just wanna make sure that that doesn't, isn't just a temporary solution, we wanna make sure that, that bill's gonna go forward. Um, to make sure, and it was great to be able to say that we already are doing, we're not asking of the state anything, we're not willing to do ourselves. So, thank you Paul for that, that was real helpful.
I, can I, I do wanna explain that brine is a tool, it is not an every storm thing. It, it can't be used every storm, it's a tool, just like anything else in your toolbox, um, so. It might not be appropriate every storm, we just need to understand that.
So it depends upon the.
The situation and, and you know, pavement temperatures, where they're going and what kind of storm we're getting in, so.
But the point is, is that we are, and we've, we've talked about this for a while, so I just want the public to know that. What we've talked about and what we put in the budget for those tanks and things of that sort have made a difference and we are moving to friendlier.
Yep.
And all our plow truck drivers are Green Pro certified, correct Lori?
Yes.
So we're, we're all Green Pro certified, which is another step that private companies would have to get as well. Though too.
Nice. Any other questions or, actually, you're probably not done, are you done?
Uh, I was just gonna hit.
Go right ahead, go right ahead.
Uh, eighty-five oh-two buildings, so that was our biggest um, decrease with, it was the one-time items, which were the brine storage tanks and then the uh, fuel distribution system that I'm working on. That was it. Highway.
Any questions? Sing, oh, Andy.
Um, going to eighty-five oh. Eighty-five oh-two, just buildings, yeah, yeah, buildings. Um, I noticed the department had a budget of sixty-seven thousand, town manager lowered that to twelve thousand.
There were two items, uh, uh, surveillance system and uh, brine tank, storage tank. I told Lori to go ahead and buy the storage tank, because I knew we were coming into winter season, take, see if we can get that before the winter season to store our brine. And that surveillance system, um, we have money for that system to do that as well.
So then, so we're basically using excess budget from this year and not budgeting it?
Correct, that's true.
Is, is that the same with eighty-five oh-eight, operating equipment? Requested twenty-two thousand, town manager's budget's eight thousand.
Yeah, there was an X mark mower in there that we heated and I said, go get it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Sing, oh, I guess, no?
No.
Apparently not, okay. You're all set. Get out quick.
Flipping the page. Are you gonna do equipment maintenance now?
He's in charge of equipment maintenance.
Oh, boy, you're not moving yet, okay.
And I, I do want.
Number sixteen, equipment maintenance.
And I do wanna give a call out to these guys as well, because they, they really keep all our fleet on the road, our police trucks, our fire trucks, our highway. Plow trucks, these guys, uh, these guys make sure that all our equipment is there. And if they can't fix it, they send it out to get fixed and they are on top of it, calling the vendor, if not every other day. You know, every three days saying, hey, when am I gonna get this piece of equipment, because I need it back. So these guys are really on top of things down there and they make sure that our fleet is roadworthy and even. Those pieces of equipment that do not go on the road like our m- our mowers and things, they make sure that they are. Up to the snuff for when we do need them in the summertime and springtime.
Yes, so there isn't a lot in this budget, uh, most of their work is billed out to the other departments that they do the work for. Um, so this is a lot of uh, personnel and then just uh, some of the machinery and tools that they use. Um. So the only thing that. They had wanted to upgrade was their mitering bandsaw, which was four thousand dollars. Um, and then the one-time purchase of the tire changer, wheel balancer is dropping out for a drop of ten thousand, so. That was the major. Difference in their. Budget.
Any questions?
Otherwise, it's mostly health insurance and stuff like that, right?
It was health insurance and a big charge for postage, because to mail stuff back.
Because what?
When we, court, court charges if we have to mail something back.
Oh.
Because we're not, if these guys are, like I said, they're, they're scouring the internet, they're looking for deals, they, they might get a piece of equipment out. Or, or part out from California instead of here locally, if they can get it at a better rate. They get it in, put it in and then we have to ship it out, so they increased the postage was significant, it was, you know, from fifty dollars to a thousand dollars, so, but. In the, in the scheme of things, it's not, but in the budget, it's.
Saving the end.
Yeah, it's significant because of the percentage.
Percentage, yeah. Okay, Brad, did you have?
Yeah, um. We've had this conversation before too, about cell phones, we seem to have a lot of cell phones. So you were going to look into a, a more efficient, more. A cheaper way to maybe tie some of these cell phones going on, sorry Lori, we're not picking on. The maintenance guys, but why do the maintenance guys need a cellphone, but um. Just, what have we done for that, cause if I sat there and counted up all the cell phones on every budget page?
We looked at it, we looked at a lot of different plans that we could get on for people, um. They. What we, what we offer for a cellphone reimbursement, let me first say, and I don't wanna talk out of school, so Lori, correct me if I'm wrong. But it's the foreman in equipment maintenance, and when there's a snowstorm or there's a truck or there's a fire truck that breaks down. He gets the phone call to come in and try to fix it or get somebody in there to fix it, so that's why he needs a cellphone. And that's why there's a cellphone in this department, it's only for one person and that's the foreman. Um, we've looked at plans, we looked at reducing costs. Um, the finance director before um. Before Adam, Tom Bowlen looked at it and there wasn't significant savings. By changing out, was not, um, we can always look at it again, plans do come down, they do change. Um, it's on my list, I know that was one of your items for your budget. Um, in your um, in your retreat to look at, it's on my list, we can look at it again and redo the numbers, but. The recommendation from the old finance director was that it was not a significant savings at overall to the town. To change how we do reimbursement to individuals, and that's the other thing, is that the town does not provide a cellphone. If I provided a cellphone to all these people, it's between thirty-nine ninety-nine and um, and forty dollars, and fifty dollars a month, so. If you look at this department of forty-eight hundred, four, four hundred and eighty dollars, that's roughly fifty dollars a month. A little less than fifty dollars a month and I think if we go look at the forty-dollar plan, that's the four eighty. So we're right there with what we can get in the, in, for a government plan for our cell phones, if we had, everyone had their own cellphone. And we do not hand out cell phones to just everybody, there has to be a reason, the department head has to show that there's a reason for the cell phones. So that we, we can, well, we look at it, so not just anybody can have a cellphone, it's, it's, it has to go through. The department head, then that gets approved by the town manager before they get the, on the reimbursement. So we do look at those things, and I understand that, yeah, you can get it, cellphone cheaper through Comcast. Gotta be a Comcast person, you gotta have Comcast to get it. Um, you know, we, I talked to Verizon. You know, they, they talked, yeah, his plans have changed, but you can't get the twenty-five dollars a line, because that's what I was thinking, no, you can't. Nope, you gotta have an initial plan of X to get the twenty-five dollars a line, so we have looked at it, we can look at it again. Um, before next Wednesday, we can try to look at it again to see if there's some savings there.
All set. Any other questions?
Not for, no.
Okay, seeing that. We'll move on. Now you're really accurate. To Buildings and Grounds?
Thank you Lori, so.
Number seventeen?
So Dawn, Dawn.
Thank you Lori.
Dawn has the two funnest departments, Building, Building and Grounds and Administration and uh. She's gonna bring up a, another new time member to the uh, budget presentation table. And that's her Deputy Director for Environmental, Leo.
How you doing?
God, uh, one of the Leos. Leo Lovlette, not God debt, Lovlette. Um. That, right, there I go, they're rhyming, so, uh, but Leo is the DPW Director, Deputy Director for uh, Environmental. And uh, is learning the process along, he's, he's, you know, been here just over about eight months now, so. This is a good learning curve for him, so he gets to sit in the second hot seat.
We haven't scoured the previous people too much, right? Okay.
There's always a first time.
Somebody has to get it, go right ahead. Yes.
Buildings and Grounds. This was um. Very new to me. I never realized how much work they do. Um, and they do a lot. So. I've been trying to make some adjustments. Throughout the department, bring it together. Figure out what their needs are and how they function and how to make them function even better. So that's what I've been working on, making all kinds of lists and um. I'm still, I'm still in that process, so going through the budget, the maintenance of the buildings. Um, I had, obviously, there's a seventy-two thousand dollars, which I had proposed. Um, twenty-five thousand of that got taken out and put into a different line item, so it's still here, it's just in a different spot. These are all items that we do under Buildings and Maintenance, fire extinguishers. Um, alarms, the fire, pull, pull alarms, janitorial supplies, which I'm trying to work out a plan where. We can purchase in, go back to purchasing in large quantity for the town. For whoever departments want to join along and hopefully we can get a savings when we buy in bulk. And that is my goal, we're still trying to work to that, I don't have figures to put to that number yet, um, we can only go with what we've been. Spending, but I'm trying to be able to do that reduction by being able to, to uh, save some money and. Buy it all, all at once and, you know, once a year or twice a year, whatever it takes and we're, we're working on that. What are our, what are the needs for janitorial supplies? Um, I've been finding that every building we go to, they use a different plumber, a different electrician, a different HVAC, a different. And it's very confusing, which building are we on, what's your problem and where do, who do we call for, I mean, the list, so. We're trying to get them all under. One inspection time through the year or two, whatever it is, um, like the fire extinguishers, that's once a year. Um, for the company to come in and inspect every one of them, so we took the entire town, every single fire extinguisher. In this town that we own and we went through them all, they're all tagged, you'll find a green tag on them, Kyle will be going through. Every si- you know, six months to be able to check, to make sure that they're still there and da-da-da. Um. Same thing with the uh, irrigation and generators and all of these things have to be. Uh, inspected. And some of them were being done, some of them weren't, so we're, we're still trying to pull all of this together and.
Get a procedure.
Get a procedure, yes, thank you. Um, outside is fairly straightforward, we, you know, do the flowers, the trees and lawn mowing and, and whatnot. Um, so that, that line item has basically stayed about the same. Uh, we need some new equipment, um. The basic lawn mowers, the push mowers are okay, we're, that X mark that you just heard Lori, we're gonna get the old one from that. Um, to be able to help around here, because the one we have here is twenty, thirty years old and it leaks more oil than it does. And we've had it over to Equipment Maintenance and it comes back and after a time or two, it's leaking worse than it was before, so it's just like, okay.
What's the next mark?
What's the next mark?
It's the sit on it and the handles, zero turns.
That one, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, we borrowed it once last fall. And, um, Kyle Epps loved it, so. I want that.
Yeah.
It's the main mark.
Right. Um, but we def, we need some new equipment, a lot of our vacuum cleaners for cleaning the buildings. There are some over in highway or in the ambulance bay that are held together with duct tape. You know, uh, they don't suck up all of the stuff we need to have them, so there's some things we need to go out and, and purchase this year. Um, our plowing, we tried to put a, out a contract, I was a little late this year. Um, and the next price that we could get was a significant increase for a twenty-four seven service. And that would be here at town hall, police and the central fire station and opening up the library and the church. Oh, the parking lot behind the church that we use for the, um, senior center.
Is that eight-three-five-nine?
Yes.
Yep. Um, let's see, the maintenance schedule of the buildings, there's never been a building maintenance schedule that I could tell. We have been reacting to things that are breaking. And the buildings are getting older, so we're getting more, more breaks. So what I'd like to do is to be able to set up a schedule, to be able to look at all of that and to be able to establish when things need to be done. This next year, if you look around the foundation of this building and the one next door, uh, you've got a lot of rebar showing, we have to fix that. If we lose that rebar, we're gonna be in a lot of trouble. Um, there's some of the downspouts from the gutter system and you heard Lori talk about that, that's a safety issue that we need to be able to address.
Especially, yeah.
Things like that. Two things that we got pulled off right now, um, some of the gazebo down below needs to be fixed, um, and in the ramp that goes up into, on the side of the, the side of the building, that needs a little bit of repair. Um, I was talking with our, um, custodian this morning and he feels that with the new person that we've, uh, we've offered a job to the second full time. So hopefully he'll have help this coming summer. Uh, another custodian. And he feels that with the two of them, they might be able to fix that in-house instead of sending that out. So that was the reason why we, we took that off. Um, so other than that, I guess that's, that's about it for the buildings and grounds. They do a lot of work, they're here and there and everywhere. Um, and yes, I did ask for a cellphone for him because I need to find him wherever he's at.
I hear you.
Questions? Andy?
I, I don't have any questions, I just, I just wanna make sure people at home are following along. You just listed a lot of things that this department's gonna go out and do that is different than what they've done, yet you've had a decrease in budget. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
They're not doing anything less than they do, we're just doing it in a little different way.
Yes, there is an overall decrease in the budget and the reason being is that we put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the sprinkler, fire protection sprinklers. And we're repurposing hundred thousand dollars of that money to do the rebar foundation repair, roofs, gutters and things of that sort. So those are fifty thousand dollar savings. So we're just looking at spending the money differently.
And that was the, that was the point I, I wanted to get across, is it sounded like we were gonna go out and add a bunch of stuff, but actually you're doing it very responsibly. And the overall budget for this department is actually down versus last year.
Correct.
Yep.
It's hard to, it's hard to argue with the fact that their budget's down from last year.
Yeah.
I know. What were you gonna say, what are you doing this for? I just wanna, go ahead Barbara.
I just wanna say that we were here for a planning board meeting last night. And getting here on the roads was, was great. This is like, you know, we, our meeting was at six-thirty. And when I got here, I always worry with my hip about sliding around icy patches or whatever, but there were no icy patches. I mean, the grounds people had, you know, all around town hall, all the access points were almost dry. Uh, so they did a great job. Even during the storm, you know, so.
Yeah, and that was weird.
Did a great job.
I, I, I got a text about six o'clock and I'm like, what the heck are you saying? And I said, you need to go to bed, now. He was exhausted, absolutely exhausted.
I don't know how they keep up.
The hours these guys in all the highway, the hours that they put in is phenomenal, their dedication is-
Cause I know during the storm, you know, even, I'm, you know, I was seeing the trucks go by, you know, Back River and Back River is known for its S-curves. Um, and they were keeping those, you know, clear, so they did a fantastic job with back-to-back storms.
This is a curiosity question, it's not for criticism. I just need to understand, eight-three-two-one, the maintenance for buildings? They were asking for seventy-two, you put them for forty-seven thousand? Was that something, again, that you were able to do proactively?
No, we put that twenty-five thousand dollars elsewhere. We moved it down.
Oh, that's the one.
That's the one.
Eight-five-oh-two. It's more of a building, there was just the, the, um, gutters.
Okay, okay, so it's a relocation.
It's still there, it was just- We had a discussion whether it should be in that column or this col-
You did mention it before, but I didn't know that's where it was, okay. Excellent, thank you. Anyone else? No, nice job, thank you. And last is number seven, Public Works.
Public Works Admin.
Yeah.
Admin Engineering.
Admin. Go right ahead.
So, this division has a hundred percent changeover rate, new rate. So, we are working, um, and getting caught up. And, again, we're trying to put forward our, our best um, budget that we can. And if you remember, a couple of months ago, back in October, I came before you to change a town engineer to a civil engineer so that we could save some monies um, that way. Um, by, and also bringing him up. And he learns about the town and then he wants to be able to hopefully someday get his PE and then be able to potentially get the town engineer's job. You know, should, should we need it at that point, um, in time. So, and that lends to longevity and to be able to have the history, which in this position, you really need to have a lot of the history to know what's happened in the town.
Yep.
So I think that's very important. Um, so, uh, he has started, uh, last Monday. And, um, seems to be, um, catching on, we're, I've got more projects for him than he-
Don't scare him off, don't scare him off.
Leo's trying to, trying to steal him and he's like-
Well, that, that's good word though, if that's-
Yes.
You've noticed that already.
He, he feels that he's, he's much needed, that's for sure. Um, basically, uh, going down through it, some of our operating supplies, we stayed the same for the MS four testing. Um, we have to do some different type of testing this year, which now that we have our civil, he can go out and do some of the testing that's needed. Um, let's see, what else do we have? There wasn't a whole lot that we changed in through here.
The big thing to know in this department is that by doing the reorg of taking away one deputy director and the town environmental coordinator and moving that money around, this department saves about ninety-seven thousand dollars in salary money. Salary and benefit money by just moving that one position around. So, and that's the big takeaway from DPW admin is that they have a savings based on that information and then there's some additional cost because now there's gonna be some additional training that the new engineer's gonna have to go to and things of that sort. So that's in there, you know, for, uh-
You'll find the training line.
Dues and fees went up because of that as well.
That's what I was curious.
So, um, but the big takeaway is that by reorging, reorging the way the personnel was being paid and situated in this department by going with this engineer, it saved the town money. And this department money going forward in the next year's budget. Nice.
So a lot of ours is, you know, new equipment, new computers because inevitably something is always breaking down. We need new software, some of our software is getting to the end, they won't service it anymore and we need to be able to do some upgrades in, in that type thing.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing that in this budget, is that something you're talking about? Do you have a, a single line for computer equipment? You don't?
Yeah, it's down in the, uh, eighty, eighty-five oh four.
That's equipment, did you said software.
Um, that's where I've put it because I don't have any other spot to put software. So I put it under computer and software and, and that's what, where I've been.
Do you have a column somewhere for office software or something or?
Yeah, it should be up in eighty-three thirty-four.
Eighty-three thirty-four?
Yeah, that's, uh, okay. Ma-, uh, maintenance of office equipment, that's where we would do some software things if we needed to. But when we buy a new computer, if we have to put CAD on it or something, it's all rolled into the purchase price of the new computer on eighty-five oh four. So it's still within the, the budget, it'd just be-
Yeah.
No, I just was trying to understand.
So eighty, eighty-three thirty-four to me is the maintenance on our, our copy machine. We also have a, a large plotter, um, that we, a couple of years ago, we didn't continue with our service contract because it was gonna be fifteen thousand dollars. So of course, that's the year that I, we broke down and we had to put, you know, five or six thousand dollars into that line item to be able to, to fix it, but it's under that copier, it's just a big copier instead of-
And their computers are not the no, you know, the nine hundred doll- their computers are not the nine hundred dollar ones because they need to crunch a lot of numbers with CAD. CAD's a very big, big program that they all have on their computer, and so-
The design part of it's-
You know, so that's why their computers are at six thousand dollars. And the software is the software and, and, you know, if we wanted to break it out, we could say, okay, CAD software is X amount in eighty-three thirty-four and the rest is eighty-five four. We just rolled it all up into the computer purchase of six thousand dollars.
What we do is we've got what, uh, CAD is on our network and we have purchased, uh, two licenses, so we can put the CAD software on several machines, but only two of us can use it at the same time, so that's savings. Cause we don't all need to use it at the same exact time, so we can save a little bit of money there and not having different, you know, that precise license. We have it on the computer, but we just have to watch who's using it.
Okay, I was just trying to understand because you, that, that's fine, I'm comfortable with that. Any other questions? Sing now. Oh, Nancy, I'm sorry.
I just wanna make a comment.
Absolutely.
I, I wanted to thank Dawn for all the information that you presented tonight prior to the, the actual budget presentation. I think you helped make clear, um, the vast number of responsibilities that, uh, borne by your department. Um, and how those responsibilities meet the needs of individual citizens and the community. Um, and I'm gonna thank everybody at the DPW for their tireless work to keep the town looking nice and, uh, running smoothly and, uh, efficiently, so. Lot of, lot of people go into, to Megan, this is, is a, a well-oiled machine and, and I think, you know, it's on social media too, people are really appreciative and, and are noticing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would echo those comments, it definitely, DPW has always done a great job, in my opinion, and especially with road maintenance. Um, and I appreciate that and the folks, we don't see like the, uh, um, auto mechanics and stuff like that, I'm sure they do a great job as well, it's just, they're not as visible to us. But, uh, thanks for all the work that you do.
We wouldn't have them working.
Well, yeah, I mean, you-
We'd notice their absence, I guess.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's true of all of the divisions.
That's right.
You don't see a whole lot of them, but we do want to have you down to wastewater to see them.
I, I wanna come down there someday, cause it's, it's gotta be an interesting setup. Um, yeah.
Just curiosity, it's probably been in the other budgets, but I just hadn't noticed it. We have three dams, huh? This is, uh, under eighty-two?
Yes, and we pay the fees because we have to pay fees to the state.
Yeah, so what happens, we, what are they doing, flood controls, that why we have them?
Uh, yeah, one's on Natta Cook.
Yeah, one's Natta Cook, Stump Pond.
Lori's the expert on my-
And Meadowwood Pond.
She's the dam-
I don't even know where Meadowwood Pond is.
Where, what pond?
Meadow?
Oh, uh, the bottom of, um, Pilgrim, you go down Pilgrim and go down, uh-
Oh, yeah, yep.
It's at the end, there's a gate there, the dam is right there.
And where's, where's Stump?
Uh, Stump Pond? Um, that's over off of Craftsman Lane.
Okay.
Do you know what Craftsman Lane is? Um, you almost think that you're in Amherst, but you're really in Merrimack.
Right on the edge, yeah.
And then the third one is, uh, Natta Cook Lake, which is really, they call it a dam, but it's really a piece of wood.
Oh, okay, that goes up and down?
There is a spillway, um, but it's not, yeah, it's classified as a dam.
A dam has to be of certain height. Um, so the buildup, even though there's only one board, the buildup's-
If the boards weren't there, Natta Cook Lake would not be-
There.
It'd be drained, it'd be much lower.
We take it out every fall, the board. And it, it's literally only a two by four. Um, and we put it back in in the spring, so the water's that's, huh, there for the summer.
That's funny.
See, something we didn't know.
Now, how much does it cost to replace that damn wood? We'll end that with a joke. Yeah, that's right. Okay, I think we're all set.
I think that's it.
Thank you very much, you did a nice job, Dawn, and thank you, everybody. And I don't think we have anything else, comments?
Yep.
I, I will, that's right, tomorrow, same time, same channel. And rather be a busier night as well. I'd like to have a motion for adjournment, perhaps? Barbara? Make some motion and Nancy seconded? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? How dare you, no. So it's, so it's five, zero, zero. Good night, everybody, see you tomorrow.
Thanks, guys.